Alright, it is July 8th. May 25th. We have had a wonderful July 3rd and 4th, a whole wonderful weekend. I do have a motion to accept the agenda and all the order. Eric's in all favor.
Hi.
My name is Lee Dennis. The Citrus Select Board is committed to providing environment and respect during our meetings. We ask all members to interact in polite manner, even when there is disagreement. We value the participation of our community. And I have all participants, everybody, people who are marginalized, minority, tight communities, to be welcomed and respected. We ask our community members and all who participate to commit these standards, support and respect all our wealthy community. Do we have any walk-ins, any walk-ins, things not on the agenda? What's your thoughts? None are online? We will go to the fourth and tenth straighter.
Thank you. Start some good news this week. We want to congratulate Shari on her first anniversary with the Select Board PAC. Thanks, she's much happier working for us than she was. Happy anniversary to Shari. I'll do a quick water update, but a lot of the problems coming in just from technical usage. Tack track, the pond is even, last week we were plus 2.25. Reservoir is at minus 7.5, that's down to minus 3 last week. Average daily demand was 1.837 million gallons a day, that's up a little bit from the week before, 1.827 million gallons. This is our busiest out of the year, having so many users. So Eric and Kevin will copy, but their decision whether or not they're going to Tier 2 restrictions. DPW, we pay at Maple Street for growing first batch today, came out great. Later this week, the contractor will be on Family Drive, Pratt Road, Bishop's Lane, Vol Valen, and Peerton Drive as a neighborhood up by the police station. Then Booze is scheduled to finish work on Lawley and Hermine this Friday. Remind the people that that's Columbus, Scottsdale, St. Louis, down the harbor. There are changes to the traffic pattern in Cold Potway behind CBS that is two-way traffic this week. So please be extra careful and be aware of pedestrians in that area and pedestrians in that area. Library, summer concert series starts tonight. Concerts held in the Lando Stichwitt Town Library, Rain or Shine, every Wednesday beginning July 9th at 6:30. This week is Ooh La La, Hawaiian inspired act featuring interactive shows for families. July 16th is Sweet Rock Stompers, American Hoots Band forming Cajun, blues, and folk. July 23rd, Steel Rhythm, a quartet performing on steel drums. July 30th is the Flamingo Boston Music and Dance, Food, and Spanish Lucian Culture. So if you have some time, it's a great event, bring the kids, pick a picnic, have a good time at the library. This Saturday, just as an FYI, we will have a contractor putting down a new seal coat and re-stripping the parking lot, Council Agents, part of the maintenance line. So please be aware of that, we'll be trying to get through that parking lot this weekend. We also want people to be aware that we have reported sighting of lion's mane jellyfish at both Peggy and Adrian Beach over the weekend, they're being in the suite. The darky color, those animal seaweed, jellyfish can sting if you come into contact with them, so please stay clear. Lifeguards are aware of this and have signs posted in the beaches. Another good news, the Citrus High School tennis court is open for use. That project is completed except for some punch board items. Course look fantastic, they're giving off their play. We do want to remind people there's no skateboarding, rollerblading, or roller hockey allowed on tennis courts. Also, there is no pickleball on those courts. Pickleball should be played, also the new pickleball court behind Recreation Center of the old gates. There is no sewer work going on this week. The gas companies continuing their gas line replacement on Jericho Road. And food bin continues to need your help, items can be dropped off at pantry during operating hours in the bins behind the old gates, Citrus Library building market, and Shaw's. That's what I have for a quick update this week. Questions?
Good thing.
Family customers, how was the fourth holiday? Pretty tame.
Yeah, I got a picture of both police chief and the fight chief, really pretty tame. Storm's on July 3rd, really cleared people out very early, different kind of fireworks. Be surprised, we really run a lot of fireworks. Well, we thought we'd carry over. Really feel quiet weekend, couple minor things, a couple PCs, one accident. I'll give you. Also with that, the Wednesday next, we're gonna do, pretty clean, we're gonna do a bathroom of Egypt, so apparently it's so far been refused, even playing music in there, which is good.
We wish that you used them.
Yeah, actually, yeah, we're playing. There was a sign, somebody put a sign up on the bathroom being like, these cost $4,800, do you want this money to go to the schools?
Okay, a couple of things, the money that you paid for the bathroom was out of the beach fund, which is paid by the beach check, so it's not the same money.
Which you can't get to the schools.
And what do you have in all this school budget? Really not a whole lot of money. It's very popular, we haven't got a lot of calls, we only get complaints in our office no complaints. But we haven't got any complaints that funding this has been good. It's gonna go up every Monday, locked up every next year, so far it's gone wrong. Okay, questions to the public? What we're doing on, just have your, what, I don't know what we're saying, no, alright. Now, break, come on up. It's hot, water update. What Eric did.
Oh, it's an exciting topic.
Eric can't be just talking water, everything.
So, we've been holding out on water. In my, usually we put these restrictions in before July, but we've been holding out as long as we can without getting some rain. We're starting to see it now, we've also had some problems with a lot of rain, and recently we got an issue with our mangy's contractors. We had a line blowout and it took out some of the circuit boards to help run the mangy's contractors, get those out of line. Just as an update on that, we are going to replace a lot of piping that was put in a few years ago when we were doing some repairs to the plant, so it was a temporary thing, we've been using it for multiple years now. So we are gonna replace some piping. And you know, we have three circuit boards that we're taking out of mangy's contractors. We're putting an order in for two for five, and we'll be getting those in a couple weeks time, and then get some of that upline. But that's, that's why I'm saying on that. We're still on state one drought. Water has been going down, we have a lot of loss. We feel we have enough water now. It doesn't rain again, but we think we're being proactive by putting in the next steps and getting in the next restrictions so we can stop there, you know, water usage, keep the water usage down. Water usage has been pretty high, and I'll hand that out to Eric. About those restrictions, that and that issue, so that they've been running.
Yeah, we would, I think based on where we are now historically looking at the level of reservoir, it would make sense to go to the next level. Yeah, and we, I have a feeling even though we get a little bit of rain every now and then, it takes a lot more than what we're getting, so I have a feeling that we'll probably be put back in a level two drought situation in Southeast Region families, based on history than what we're seeing. So.
So Tier 2 restrictions are handheld hoses only, 5pm to 9am, no irrigation systems at all, no washing of vehicles, such as cars, boats, or motorcycles, so we do get complaints on mangy's, on water. No funnel pools, no tubs, no fish tanks. So it's really racking up.
You can still water your, you can still water your pet falls?
Yes, yes. Inheld hoses, the ponds are, the ponds are empty.
Staff is already, they have their warning cards in the vehicles, so whatever they see, they're gonna start getting them.
So they'll be going out, going on one week raise period, and then through this, that will be fine after that.
Yes, that's right. Right now, we started. Just, they'll work it out.
Okay. Put out first thing in the void, we've got two water restrictions, what those are, they will all, also should be here on the webpage, and our email blast. So, we're up.
We only do signs on Tier 2, we don't do Tier 1. We do, have you done a new sign? No.
It really came up, Kevin and I doing, I'm driving around, I have a little bit of stuff that we can't process, people just calling. We started seeing people watering, 2 o'clock in the afternoon, so we talked to Eric, we talked to Phil, said, alright, this week is gonna be warnings, and then after that we'll just start. The house correctly, the bus, we've blocked it, we've had a sprinkling or two knocking out. So it's a little, really, can't miss that.
Right there.
And remember, the Tier 1 restriction is put on automatically by the state.
Right.
So sometimes we do have water with restrictions, are replaced, we generate revenue by selling water, so.
Right, that's why I asked a question, probably you do the ones that are Tier 1. But, yeah.
And then if the band, if the band just, if the water keeps dropping, we'll actually bring employees in, 2, 3 o'clock in the morning, people start sprinkling, sprinkling together.
Yeah, we're still cool, we kind of know where to look.
Usually have to figure out.
Probably, and just print out a list of the fines from last year.
So you just drive around, like, that guy's grass is green, everybody else is brown, so he must be watering something.
And there's no exemptions right now for people trying to grow the grass, right?
So we do issue, we do issue exemptions if people have an issue, say you have an septic system, and, you know, he was gonna wash away, or you didn't have a septic system, plus a lot of water to establish grass, might be a momentary flow of water, but you let it go, but it would be after hours, and can they actually get something with a lot of water?
They have to apply for a permit and a sign, so this is why they're able to water. This is, I mean, a little later in the year, typically we go into this earlier, so actually we're.
Usually we have some.
Yeah.
First, first we understand.
Yeah, are water complaints?
They're, they're, they're increasing, as usual, as we, the man goes up and we need more water from the plant. So, it's a contact error.
Right, the water, while the rest of the water goes down as levels go down for water itself, so. Even if those contractors were operating fully, when the plant is running at full capacity, I think Kat said it's about 30, 35 percent of the water that's hanging in the rest.
That's what you go through the contact.
So those contacts have to set up, we gotta take the plant offline, build that as a temporary reserve, we're bringing well 17, 18 down, running it through those contacts, as well 17A was so bad for iron mangy's, we hadn't finished the project until 17. So that's what that was for, and then we kept it because we had them and keep running them, but they're not designed to handle the new plant, and they're already kind of on the run. Fall out, I mean, maybe a little, maybe surprised either way, if there hasn't been more or less, or any.
Uh, I guess right now, I'm a little happier than I thought it would be, number of complaints.
Yeah, so far, so far. Like the data of Dallas.
Maybe, things are coming together, so.
It's good, no, no, it's all, understand.
And, you know, we did flush in the spring season, we did run into a problem where we had a pressure drop in certain parts of town, all properties. We sent it back to the engineering company, they're saying it doesn't make sense, you know, shouldn't do that, but, you know, we fall out, and said, I have a lot of pressures, so we're still trying to figure that out, you know, probably know why that is happening.
We've been in the area, think where the problem is, and just getting on as many valves as we can, took as much time as we want to, trying to find if there's something close that we've got something.
Again, as Frank mentioned, if you have groundwater, please let the water department know, we then call the line or send an email. Not just complaints, there are data points for us, we can look at it and figure out, maybe there's a particular problem in that area that's causing groundwater, as opposed to an issue with the water. So, please let us know, it helps us make the system better as we go along.
Because it can be related to construction work or main replacement works, for this line replacement we're doing, so that would be a cause.
Do we need a motion, Eric?
No, this, this, the water problem, we want to show you guys the first ones that we had.
Any else?
Thank you. Alright, Chamber of Commerce Heritage Day, and Elder, Mark Block.
You guys. Everybody?
Look, look.
Look at that.
What's, what's new, what's not new? Just the scoop.
So, Ron's here. Bringing up, so everyone has, has everyone had a chance to see the, the second?
Yes.
Okay, great. If you're interested in time, what we'll do, just give you a quick overview, we'll get into some of the maps, and show you what we're gonna do. These guys can talk about the Beer Garden area, idea, what's happening there. So, very similar format, year before, we've got Friday night is Luminary Sundown. We don't really run that, it's a community thing, just promote it. There will be a boat parade, we can force them down, our master will be in charge of that. Saturday is when the Heritage Day starts. 10am, the vendors, Village will start, and then Food Port, Beer Garden, will be open at noon, and music will start about 8, 11 o'clock, but evening. So.
I don't wanna derail the map, but it's kind of very, we, Heritage Day will be back on Front Street this year, as opposed to being in Cold Potway, so. Well, in fact, I guess it was back Sunday. So, I think that's what we're really excited about, back on Front Street. Sorry, Matt.
No, that's right. Sunday, similar format, just a little bit earlier, end time, vendors, music. Did anybody have any questions? Format, what they're doing?
I mean, good. What's the feedback and thoughts on, you know, Front Street? Most businesses are pretty supportive.
The business, yeah, the business we spoke with, actually, they're very supportive. Felt that being in Cold Potway, had a segregated front, so some of the, they didn't have the businesses that they usually have, some stores had mentioned that they were kind of hot red, so, some stores mentioned they didn't have the stators they usually have, that would be so. And we received a lot of feedback, that people wanted that. So, you know, we'll put closer to the town, make that happen, so, we'll try, that's what we'll try. Yeah, I just jumping apps, see. So, this is the overview of all of, it's better for the area. So, this area right here is going to be the music festival, Beer Garden, Food Port, get any more detail on that. And then this is Front Street, so we'll have vendors here, and we'll have vendors here, then we'll have, we'll probably have a need to have this area for vendors, and then some of our larger vendors be in here. And then this area right here, we're probably gonna do a 20 by 40, kids own, have kid events, some family events. We are doing the carnival rise this year. So, we've got more, you know, plates and lights on that, so. So, that's where, this is where it was last year. So this right here, we're just gonna use for parking, for some of the entertainers, and hopefully work a little bit, police stations, and figure out bus drop off in this area right here. That circle's for that. Yes, very similar to years prior. Yeah, 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 and we've worked with the no wharf, you know, to make sure that of traffic, traffic flow through here, out the other end, this will be open as well. Obviously, these parts of Front Street will be closed, so we, we'll have some vendors. We help, we help, for vendor sign up, so we want to be a vendor out.
They all fold, still take some water?
We're still taking, we're still taking, we're still taking, yeah. We, we, in theory, can do a footprint of 85, 10 by 10 tents, maybe 62 vendors signed up, so it was a little bit larger, hence, so we're about there.
We had 62.
Yeah. We did, we did a couple unique things this year that they turned into specials. We dropped the vendor price from 500 to 450. And then we also did a nonprofit fee for 250, so nonprofit, one use 10. And the other thing we did was, we, here we'll have a couple tents ourselves, it's not a table, sorry. So, right here will be our tents, and then we're gonna have a couple other tents, one for the chamber, and then we're gonna have a community tent, we're allowing nonprofits who don't want to commit to a weekend, to do our slots, no comment. And then we have City TV, it's going to be right here, psyched by that, right, that influence. And then the Sister Cities, can't forget them, they'll be in here. And probably some other select vendors, so, so we're psyched by that, so. The other thing, the other big change, these guys were getting to be, was that this whole area, it's gonna be, black and white, we're not all family, Beer Garden, frankly. Found that, it's very depressed last year, we added, and it just makes more sense, it's more fluid, we'll have, this is kind of, those are where the party parties are gonna be, but that will be fenced in, so people can access food bodies and the beer garden, you know, the beer, so people are, you know, running in and out, chasing people around.
People get to go to their beer too.
Yeah, yeah. Was this we need here?
Yeah.
More of it, the other walk through here. The other we're gonna have too is, we did spend more money on tents. So, yeah, taking some of the feedback from last year, you can see it's more space this year, there was a lot of congestion last year, which made it, both the police, everything, monitor, people in such confined spaces, so we did add more space this year. Some of the feedback, we see it was, can't get in the bathroom without dumping my beer or chugging my beer, we didn't want either of that, so bathroom, saving food couldn't be, so just tried to make it more kind of fluid area of all congestion right in front of here. I think by having everything included in that instance, or wet zone, it will provide more enjoyable experience for everybody. Some of the veterans see these, not a shady area, it's really hot first weekend in August, so we actually, actually put the size of our shade and space this year, and it does make sense, where it gets our benches, seating areas, if you can actually enjoy themselves on, you shoulder to shoulder on a, you know, potentially really hot day, the overall experience is really, and we're, put some test food court, so people can sit, actually, be, not sit around, have a curb someplace.
Try to get your hot dog.
We have efficient chips.
That was a thing that, that we, we met with the police and the fire and public works, you know, I think we're all on the same page, that one of the main things that were really important to us has been it's family friendly, and it always was family friendly before, but it was so congested that it was tired and wanted, what was going on? And so, you can see that we have re entrances and exits now, and if anybody wants to come in, you can look at this area, they'll need to go through an entrance to get food, and but if we're doing our jobs correctly, it won't feel like that, you know, because all our people are gonna have each entrance and exit, man or woman by somebody, and, but all they're really doing is stopping alcohol from leaving or coming in, it's their only job. They'll be, there's nobody IDing anybody at the doors, all the IDs will be done at the point of contact, buying something, and will, everybody will be wrist banned, and with the, with the lack of congestion, congestion will be able to actually monitor everybody a lot easier than it was in the past. But like I said, the main thing here is that everybody going into this area, if we're doing our jobs right, won't even know that they're walking in and out of anything, so they won't feel like they're actually entering a bar, if you will, they'll just feel like they're walking around areas.
They will be stopped with the beer.
What's that?
They will be stopped.
They will be, yeah, they're not, they will be stopped, but if they're coming in to just enjoy a food court, they won't feel like they're entering a, an alcoholic space, is what I'm trying to, you know, they should have a good experience.
If a 14-year-old wanted to go and get a hot dog, or, or get a hot.
There's no, they won't be stopped, they won't be blocked to, they won't be, there's no issues. And that's the, always the way it was, it was just that it was so congested, especially during the, the main events at the end, it was just very hard for us, and like I said, we, you know, we have a, a very good, you know, track record, we've done this before, but just like, like, we're, we're ready for feedback, and we are ready to pivot if the police chief or fire chief needs anything, we must, we are, we are certainly tolerant friendly, and obviously ready to do whatever it takes, so. So that's kind of the kind.
Couple of, just simple items I wanted to bring up today too, so there's, there's our source gears that we use for the stage, if you get updated by Nexus, so that's, that will be the shade, so. And also, you know, in years past, as you remember, you know, there was double tents, we're just gonna do some tents, so we'll, we'll have more room to walk on both sides, and there will be a little space for two tents in the background. So we, we felt strong that we, you know, we want to have that experience. If that's probably have any questions. Elder.
Don't have a specific question, but I do, I really appreciate how much feedback they've taken, and really made this year kind of incorporate all that feedback, and attempt to improve it, making it a better experience, so. I can tell you all the thought, a lot, so I really appreciate that, that ask. But you've like, you've really, you've really kicked the tires off those.
Yeah.
Look forward to a very successful weekend, and I really do appreciate the delay, I think that's, would really be a good price for that. I don't know what that price is, it would be a good price for it, so.
Could you guarantee the weather?
Yes, yeah, guaranteed it will be.
It's not gonna rain, so.
Some sort of luck. Some sort of sacrifice.
Okay.
Well, well done.
I think it looks great, I'm super excited, especially for the Indian.
Oh.
Is that new?
Came out of nowhere.
So excited.
I didn't, yeah, he was, I'm gonna do a tent, I see, here's some food, you gotta be in the, in the food court, and on this food court thing, I did send all the vendors to the door out, so they know who's, who's gonna be there, so.
It's a restaurant? No, I'm sorry, I didn't recognize the name either.
And like we said, that, that food court experience, if we do this correctly, people will be able to just sit and enjoy, in the past, we were just juggling everything, right? So this, hopefully this will, you know, and again, we all, I think we all, we all said this from the start, we, we can't, and Matt's done an amazing job of taking, taking control of this, we really want to look back at this in five years, and say, look how far we've come, right? So this is just step one, you know, base step, and Matt's done an amazing job of, you know, being the catalyst in this, so, hopefully, you know, step in the right direction.
Heritage Day's 56-year-old history.
No, wow.
Only free event of its time in Massachusetts.
Really? That's a fun fact.
Very, very, very worthwhile, and very, I think we should be proud of it, to support our community.
Putting the foreword in the notion, last been sale, running sale, point of, music, any, any acts, or any one of the people know about it, or.
Oh, yeah, or nothing, yeah.
We've been announcing.
Mick Jagger will be there.
Hopefully we'll have some surprise.
Yeah, some surprise guests, yeah, alright.
I heard you're curating, cancel some of your bets, I know.
It's basically, but for the most part, though, within other than what, so everybody's really situat- based, you know, and so it's really trying to bring the music back to like, out of the heritage products. Everybody is really excited about, you know, just this whole event, and the music vendors are really pumped that they're playing their own. Just this whole event, and the music vendors are really pumped that they're playing their own talents, should be, should be pretty excited.
We have three national acts, but they're local, on local, uh, people. Uh, so I, I, I'm more proud of the music this year, it's got to be, you've been announcing that on, uh, on our socials, so. Yeah, so stay tuned.
All right, well, we'll take them, thank you.
It's gonna be excellent.
Move to approve a special event permit to the Chamber of Commerce for Heritage Days, but Friday, August second, at dusk with the luminary. Saturday, August third, from nine AM to eight PM, and Sunday, August fourth, from nine AM to seven thirty PM. And the all final inspection with building, fire, and board of health.
Let's scream our saylemans, Harrison, all in favor?
Hi.
It's unanimous.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Right. Next, we have Emily, hello? Something I don't get to say all the time?
Duck drop.
Duck drop.
Duck drop.
Um, I am here representing the Citro, our business association, we're. In our probably third month of a new set of board members, trying to just revamp, collaborate, um, work closely with the chamber. And I'm just kinda get our, our ducks in a row, um. So this was just kind of a chat, a conversation that we had, we're trying to become more independent as an association, used. Economic development center heavily for, um, holidays in the harbor last year, and. We're trying to just get a little bit more independent, get some fundraising going, also using different opportunities to use our merchants and. Get everyone involved and get our name out there and kind of get the, that front straight area up, all together as a team. So this duck drop event would be involving, um, the Harbor Master, Fran McMillan at the launch. The chamber is supportive of it, Citro Harbor Business Association, um, the Run House is gonna be donating shirts for everyone that buys a duck. Um, Native is making duck pins and stickers, um, we're gonna get some baskets together for prizes, but, um. And hopefully, fingers crossed, um, Chief Duncan may show up with his ladder truck for an epic duck drop with the cap down. Um, which would be amazing, but he can't say yes, and because if there's an emergency, but he said yes, but if there's an emergency, we'll have a plan. Um, so it's gonna be about two hundred, three and a half inch ducks that are sold, numbered on the bottom. Registration at eight fifteen to that nine o'clock time, we'll actually eat the ducks, um, put them in a big, probably fishing net. Have them get dropped over the ladder, um, and then they will float down with some assistance of Fran propelling a couple of the smaller boats. Just because of tide, and they'll, and, and they'll float slowly, um, to the finish line, which will be right under the Harbor Master's deck. Great viewing area, no one's touching it in the water, no one's being involved in that way, um, just a cute way to pick off. Heritage Days with some pins on.
No side bets, we'll get wrapped in.
Yes, we do, yeah, they do, they just wrap it in an M C that's gonna do some, oh, my.
Oh, really?
Announcing lots of things.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
We will have some fencing on the pier this year, so we can add that last year, so we'll add that football parade, so. Certain people.
They need.
We're not too worried.
Going after the ducks.
So like. They're catching all the ducks and dating them from going out.
Of course, yep, so we're gonna have, um, like the flaming noodles with probably flags, it's like an official finish line. And Mike or Fran will have a couple of their guys just gathering, we know we're putting two hundred in, whether or not we get two hundred registration, we'll be bringing. Dropping two hundred and grabbing two hundred out, and then we can just get wrapped at a dot com, no mail. So hoping to do this with the yearly thing and get there over time.
Sir, I meant that we could get a game license for this.
Yeah, I think we need.
So much. Well, yeah, I know.
I have no question.
I love the idea.
Yeah.
Lot of, uh. Move, move to approve the Citro Harbor Business Association Duck Drop Event on August second, two thousand twenty-five at nine AM. Both Heritage Days.
March twenty-second, uh, Harrison, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Good morning, yes. It's probably good. Back in, well, congrats.
Thank you so much, we appreciate it.
All right, Island Dog, Mr. Beers. How are you?
How are you?
Well, duck drop church, okay, it's beautiful, you're attending. Now.
We have a group this year, so.
Uh, yes, well, suddenly, what are we trying to do here?
Uh, I just bought a small hot dog cart, so you know, I'm gonna get a cart, I'm gonna work in town on my off cans, and I got a burger. Off break, it's gonna be on the meat park lots, that's part of it. Just basically go from there, something to do inside.
These aren't like the red name, certain things really?
No, but I did have a question.
All right, is that like a mall? Just people are, yeah, we got a, a, a red snout. We, I mean, well.
Hot dogs, it's really red.
The red, the red name, the red, red dog. But we did know.
I don't care.
I will, and I.
All right, you know, the market.
It's very simple, you guys have questions, I, I think it's great, I did, we have to do this for others. And I feel like I'm being selfish when I say this, but it's also.
He allowed it at some, he wants to do, baseball tournaments, you know?
My request, I've got a request, so if the little league says, hey.
No, it's sitting there all day, they're willing to get a hot dog.
If little league said, hey, you can bring your food truck, and you bring your hot dog cart, but we don't, just give them permission, as you don't want.
They can request.
They can request to have some of them.
So Thursday at six thirty.
You can tell I get some hot dogs. All right, can you buy a request?
You can answer to a little league field, do you think, or how to go through a request with a, a request, they'll have to come to us, sure that you've gotten the food.
I don't think, just do, just do buy a request.
There's no extra security if you're going on little league fields.
I think Mike's big enough to authorize. No, I, you know, the same.
I mean, the, the, um, ice cream trucks are required to be forty effect, and there was last, that's what I mean.
Yeah, uh.
You get forty.
I'm not, I'm not saying him specifically, I'm just saying people who, you know.
Well, but yeah.
It's children.
Like, might be that car paddlers do get forty, and you're not concerned with having a hot dog handler.
Oh, wow.
Ice cream trucks, not the effort, the extra, would they have to be fingerprinted?
They have a fingerprint.
That's just ice cream trucks, can be violent, it's fantastic.
But you would not have to be fingerprinted if he was going here.
You can do a buy a request, just making sure. Motion, any questions, desserts?
Yes, good, your thoughts?
I'll put it on the menu. We'll figure it out. I'm gonna figure it out.
Red hot dogs and blue.
That's my checks.
I would like a red hot dog, it would be pretty wild. I want some too. Red hot dog trucks are pretty good. I like all hot dogs, we're not gonna.
I do not have questions, I think this is great.
Love.
It kind of goes with all the other trucks, but it's different, it's different.
Right, and, and we'll give Mike the same advice, you need to coordinate with the other trucks, so that.
Coordinate with the truck, but there's not competition.
Good news, we'll.
It's always.
For two, guys.
Just want to say. Move to approve a new locker paddy license for Michael Beers owner of Island Dog, following locations, Baggy Beach, Egypt Beach, Vineet Beach. And the lighthouse, hours of operation, Sunday to Saturday, eleven AM and eight PM year round.
Second.
The best, you want to say them on this, please, all in favor?
Hi.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Good luck.
Thank you.
Yes.
Bye.
I'll be looking for one.
I don't know, keep coming down. Check out the league schedule.
I can email for more questions.
Call them. All right. Now we're on, this is one of the more fun things we get to do, now, we love to get everyone up, up once. It makes it easier, it helps people have, figure out what we're gonna ask about, and I think we have some folks who are the. On Zoom, Esti Santiago was on Zoom, Sardala, how are you, come on up, you're in for a good element. Skip. Fernandez, for Sister City Ireland, Skip Lovett.
Yes.
Also for Sister City, uh, Diane, come on, how are you?
And how are you?
And Tracy for Citro Culture Northern Council. All right, we're all of you, we're just committing, we're all up here.
I think that's the one person who's a little bit.
Some, oh, someone was on and it said, come.
Yeah, I don't know who that was, and I was not there anymore.
Oh, Mary, is that Mary Anne?
I didn't, I thought she was wanting to be here, so she might just be a little bit late, because we're a little bit ahead of time.
We get a comment here.
Yeah, she doesn't think we can, yeah, we are, or to him.
We've all got individual questions after this, but really, doing this enough to know, just do, make it more. Tell us a little bit about yourself, but also why the committee, also why now, for some reason, is there some. Then, or just know that I have extra pot on my hands, what's the reason why I wanna step up now? Um, and tell us any of your experience, what committee you have, any, and I go from there, again, I know it's all technical committees, but, um, it's good to kind of answer.
Well, I'll start. Uh, my name is Sardala McPhee, and, um, I'm here for the Economic Development Mission, or Committee, um. And, uh, I guess to start off with why now, I was maybe a little bit recruited into it by a great gardener. Who is just an awesome person, but she and I have very similar career paths and things that we're doing in life, and. Um, she just said it's a great board to be on, wanna be involved in, you know, situation activities, but you don't have, you know, the time. Um, and you're really kind of focused on more like the business side of things, which is where my expertise lies. Um, so that kind of convinced me, and then I had a nice chat with Barry, the chair, um, I also sat in on, um, a session. Which is really great experience, just to hear what they talk about and, uh, what some of the topics are, so that's, that's the why now. Um, and then my background is I'm a product design strategist, um, or that's part of what I do, um. I would say I'm kind of like a internal entrepreneur, I like to work in ways that benefit my lifestyle and where I am in my life, so. I have a small consultancy doing product design strategies, so working with companies that have design teams as well as business teams. And making sure that they're working together, um, sometimes when you get creative, people on the ground or business, my folks in rooms, extra talk past each other. And my job is to make sure that everyone's working together, um, so there's that, and then, uh, more recently, I started a, um. A secondhand art supply store, and I'm calling it the smallest secondhand art supply store in Massachusetts. Um, it's based in Rockland, and, um, it's been really interesting to see, to, to do something different and open up a working order store. Um, which is something I never really thought about myself, but I saw it in need, um, a lot of people have a lot of art supplies, which had a lot of art supply store options. And I love art, so that was in the school, that was free, um, but I feel like that was a very good question.
No, you, you answered exactly, your experience of committing, uh, and so recruited, again, it's kind of.
Yeah, yeah, just primarily like, I, I, about six or seven years ago, um, I also sat in on a couple of meetings, um, which is not that. If, you know, when the time allows, and my kids are a little bit older, this is the period that I would call it, so, yeah.
It's gonna be this, so also fun, because, but do you have any, did you guys know each other at all? This is the most.
Probably, I feel like I met you too.
We have so many amazing people in that, you wanna step up and volunteer, just fascinating, we're just, we're just. Just a great.
Well, it's nice to meet you all.
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Tracey Kelly, and I'm looking to come back on the Citro Culture Nexus, I was on it for six years. And then after six years, you're supposed to basically step down, so I did, and, uh, so I took my year off, I'd come back. Um, I've been involved in the arts, uh, at the James Library, and so I took the arts up in Norwell, um, just finishing up seventeen years there. So, uh, firmly committed to the arts, of importance for everybody regardless of your age, background, economics, etc. So I just wanted to get back into it and do a little bit for the day. Anything else why now?
No, that's, that's lovely, yeah, this is wonderful.
Hi, I'm Skip Fernandez, um, I am in town, I lived here in December, although I haven't lived here permanently in two months, two. Uh, but as I was coming up, I'm transitioning, um, as I was coming up, I was attending their student meeting at the next, uh, the main store. Um, and just finally understand that we can have this, and I was asked by two of us, which is in town. Books to consider, if you're part of them, and when I went across the hall to get the, I think we're gonna have a lot, uh, I was told that. One of them had reviewed everyone for the thing, so I went, I guess that's, um, not on my list anymore, so, um. But in my life, I guess, I've had, um, a lot of interactions with Ireland, although I'm not Irish, um, well, I'm Irish. Uh, and so, um, I've been, um, I've lived there, and, um. When I was in the meeting, listening to people, I think they were people that were ready to transition to the big popular, and so they asked if I would, um. Be interested in, um, joining, so I said, I'll fill out, you know, like the work, and go to the process, and so they'll check this. And I'll help further what they have done, and what they want me to do. Anything else?
Yeah, well, don't remember, I said this, some folks are on, they're prepared, and I asked a question, for a while, okay? Two weeks ago, you're here, I think.
I know, obviously, well, that's.
Took me a minute, that's fine.
Great experts.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That might be a record.
You could, right, if this works out, and if you get a point, this could be the all-time best record for President, could be in history books.
Okay.
It could be Mickey history.
Take a walk, go through the heritage.
That's true.
So I'm impressed with you, so I would like to, and, uh, uh, yes. You know, I'm Irish, working there.
Diane Forio, I have been in Citro for twenty-three years, I'm Irish. My mother's side, my mother's lineage is from four, Colleen and Reagan are my mother's, like, paternal side of lineage. Uh, my mother and her cousin are one of two, only two people to have Castle Island on their birth certificate, my family is all same, all over. They grew from Ireland, South Boston, my grandmother, my grandfather moved to Castle Island. And my husband, I've been dating, we've been dating a while, and we've brought our most friend, we've gone and dated there with our mothers there. We've been there for our honeymoon, uh, we've been with some of our children, and they're of this, and I have three six children, we have three six children. I have trade communications, I have postgraduate education, and I'm ready to get back to my community, both heartily. Secondly, um, in a self-involvement way, in a civic way, I feel like it's my turn, it's my time. And I've given a hundred percent to my family, and now I said it's time to get back to the community. And I would love to concentrate on the connectivity of expanding. The knowledge of this board and what this board actually does between the two countries, and expanding educationally. And helping, under a privilege, to be able to attend the, the trip that's put together through this. Uh, performance through the town, and it actually could be life-changing for some of these young people in the front of their lives, and in that. Maybe they, in the past. So it's something that I'm very excited about, getting back and be part of Citro and this community in a different way than I have been in the past.
Yes, yeah, Santiago, you're there, how are you, and you're looking for your economic development. How are you, and you're looking for your economic development, right?
Yeah, hey, everybody. I'm doing great, thanks. Sorry, I'm really sorry I couldn't be there. Last minute sort of change in my work schedule brought me out to California. So, but yeah, hi, I'm Santiago Lopez Mora, Santi for short. Been in town for about ten years. My wife and I have two young daughters, Gabby's six, she goes to Wampanoak, and Liv is almost four years old and about to start. Well, actually, just started this week pre-K in town. So very much in that, you know, joyful, messy, early years chapter of their lives and our lives, and sort of loving every bit of it. Professionally, I helped to lead a, excuse me, I helped to lead digital commerce at a large consumer products company. And, you know, my job is really all about helping like businesses grow sort of in today's world, right? Like how consumers want to shop, how they want to explore things, how they want to engage things. And sort of central and crucial to that is really understanding, you know, the customer, right? And what they need, how to make sure that we deliver against what they're looking for. And I think that sort of that mix of sort of strategy, marketing, the customer connection, so it kind of, it's really what gets me excited, and I think really at the intersection of what the Economic Development Commission Committee is really all about, right? Is really figuring out how do we replicate that across town to make it as thriving as possible for the businesses, and then in turn for our residents and the surrounding towns, and then obviously all of, like we know now, all of the tourists that come in during the summer months. So sort of like why now, I mean, I guess there's a couple of things. One is I feel like my kids are at a, at an age where they're starting to kind of understand things a little bit more too, and so kind of, of course, want to show them that it's important to be a part of the community and get involved, and sort of, you know, help out when you have, you know, whatever it is, a skill set, whatever it might be, however, you can kind of help to improve the world around you, that you should. And so to me, this is sort of that perfect blend of being able to do that within a sort of field that I know pretty well. And so it'd be, it'd really be an honor to kind of help support the businesses around town and help figure out different ways to make sure that Situate continues to really thrive, like it has been for at least the ten years, right, that we've been here. We've seen it change pretty significantly in a very positive way. And so to be sort of part of the next, you know, ten years or whatever it is, right, would be wonderful.
Thank you, that was very helpful. I'll go out. Questions, comments?
Mr. Chair, I could just say, I'm thoroughly impressed with the entire slate. Potential victims or volunteers. All of you and endeavor. I am just thoroughly impressed with everybody's background, the energy, the experiences that you can bring to the group. To all these nice committees. I have no question, I just have to tell you, fabulous.
I agree, thank you for stepping forward. I second that. I mean, it's, this town is built on volunteers, so thank you for stepping up.
There you go. The new, the volunteer before, or if you're brand new to town, or different skill sets. I love bringing everyone up because it's fascinating, very, I walk by, I move that person, and so we don't even know. We know that this person has an art store in Rockland, it's just easy access. We usually have to get the weight, but I think these.
I could make the whole.
Yeah.
We don't have the Mary Ann.
We're in a Mary Ann, but we can.
Yeah, I could move that over. And then you want to move on to your parents.
We do, right.
Yeah, so you just do a Mary Ann with that word.
Yeah.
Perfect. Then we get to go on, Helen. Yes. Start under committee tomorrow. Insta-committee.
And here we go, move to appoint Santiago Lopez Mora and Sardla Lunde to the Economic Development Commission for a term of three years or until a successor is named. Move to appoint Skip Fernandez and Diane Froyo to the Situate Sister City Ireland West Port Committee for a term of two years or until a successor is named. Move to appoint Tracy Kelly to the Situate Cultural Council for a term of three years or until the successor is named. Move to renew Michelle Wood to the Sister Situate Hardware Cultural District for a term of two years or until successor is named. Move to renew William Edric, Stephen Tripp, and Joan Blanchard to the Coastal Advisory Commission for a term of one year or until successor is named. Move to renew Kenneth Conway to the North River Commission for a term of three years or until a successor is named. And move to renew Kevin North to the Waterways Commission for a term of three years or until a successor is named.
Move, Mr. Gilmore, say it, Ms. Harrison, and... All in favor? Welcome. Back to you.
Thank you. That's a big, y'all, a chair. Talk about a little love.
Yes.
We get five hundred dollars a year.
Thank you, you all. Alright, the last one. Oh, a donation. Love it, yes. I'm sorry. You go, yes.
Everyone's here, it's not much.
Leach family. This is so nice. Oh, yeah.
Before you was, I sent this in a five hundred dollar donation from a leach family to the fire department.
Okay, I'm gonna respect it. Urgent.
Thank you very much, the HP.
Wow. Thank you. Urgent. Take a motion.
Move to accept the five hundred dollar donations from a leach family for use by the fire spark.
Sir, Simon Schlegel, all in favor? Aye, two yeses. Alright.
Oh, these were benefits.
Oh, my God.
Oh, yeah.
I had to zoom in by like a thousand percent.
I was saying, oh, no. You need to get like some.
No, I had to, I had to zoom in by like a thousand percent.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, there were a lot of numbers.
All right, it's an eye test on color, too.
It is an eye test.
Oh, on the plan?
Yeah, the map, I do like it, it's a good map.
Yeah, I wanted to demonstrate how detailed the project came. The three sites in this project were damaged by three different storm events. So every time there was a storm event, we had to document what became by that, due to the storm. And we had so many of them, we started to color it. And that also is going to help us during the construction, to identify the location, goes with the bid. So the three sites included in the project are Glades Beach, the public beach along Glades Road from Janet down to almost all those crossroads. This repair of Rebetman. Some of the upper slope near the roadway, and some crack damage in the sewn. Second site is at the very end of Surfside as it approaches Miss Washington Burn. This stone on the corner that would be reset. And the third site is Seaside Road. It has a Rebetman slope and a lower concrete sewn. Well, five feet of that will be cut off the top and re-poured at that location. So the easements were granted by the two smaller sites that town holds, the Public Beach along Glades. We did receive a variety of bids from three point five to six point five hundred dollars for all three sites. We did identify some damages in North Situate along Glades Beach that were not covered by FEMA damage or a storm event. But we want an opportunity to make the repairs, even though we will not, we will not cede any five percent back on that. Those repairs, we ought to include them in both projects.
This, I'll refresh my memory on it, of the stairs, not down in that area, how it affects.
Yep, the, there won't be any increased work on the stairs themselves. The stone around them will be reset, in front of them on the beach and on the hedges.
There's two, there's two sets of stairs.
There's four, that we redid along that.
Oh, and it right there was all the way over.
Yeah. And it does go to house lots to the south on Surfside, Public Beach runs to number thirty-five. Also included, which I thought was a new ramp. The concrete ramp between the white gate posts and the light guard anchor. That won't get disturbed, but the concrete pad will be re-poured, and the ramp will be re-poured. We did run some iterations to try to make that ADA compliant. They put it half a mile up to the ocean. We tried the bank, oh, the van, runways that they had. When you went to a van, if you go into a van, you have to go back, as they say, back down. We couldn't get that worked either, so we went back with what was existing. There'll be some minor improvements, you won't visually see them, but there'll be a front wall poured a lot deeper, so we won't get the undermining of the concrete in future. Anything great? We've been on hold only for FEMA to dot its i's and cross its t's. They recommended we continue to move forward with this. We did put an extended, extended award timeframe on this for contractor, because we knew it would be complicated with FEMA. They recommended we move forward for the contract. North Situate Beach has a time of year restriction that we set, so from Memorial Day to Labor Day, they couldn't work on the flats. So they could leave the other two sites and work this in the off-season as we've done in the past along Glades, which would be through the winter. It's a lot of work. I know they're anxious to get started, so as soon as everything's been finalized through FEMA, we'll get a schedule out of the contractor. The consulting engineers expect sixteen months for these three sites. I don't think that's going to happen. I think they'll be done by next spring, especially if they start off in the fall, and they may even start one of these sites next month or in September. One of the other two sites, Surfside or Seaside. Have we used this contractor yet? Yes, this is the contractor that did the beach nourishment project on this beach just in February. They were actually working, yeah, I was happy to see them.
This is right, too.
I mean, I'm not in love with the idea of them starting working during each month of the summer, but...
At this point, it's so late, it's going to end up starting in the fall. They're built by the time, well, I'm sure they have worked like now, what they've taken on, because we've been telling them, we've been this, it's early people. I keep staying in touch with them, saying I haven't heard from them in a few weeks. Letting them know, and they're really, they're a bit of a factor. We're right, we have to rebid this, we're running out of time to be able to afford it. We have to face, so. So yesterday, they were forward to see the email that said, you recommend. Well, we must come on. I think it'll be later in the fall. I have spoken with people on Surfside, because that's going to be a little tight, a little way down there. They ain't really. It picks the law.
As long as they're not complaining.
Yeah, they... But in the end, the Surfside shouldn't bother anybody, because they'll go up on the bubble burn from the end of Surfside, go do their work, and then just keep it back there. There won't be trouble solving this issue. So the big ones, the Public Beach section, which we said they can't. So after, they don't know what, when this will be Friday. Move that the Select Board of Order contract for offshore protection repairs damaged during federally declared storm events to some go eco contracting and treating the apparatus for three million five hundred twenty-one thousand four hundred sixty-three dollars.
Second, you can work, that's our, so all in favor? It's unanimous. Yeah. Long time. Alright, next.
This actually rides along with that monitor. This is like a teller who's been working on this since the beginning of GZA, and just been sitting on this construction portion of this, which is going to be a bookkeeping nightmare in the field in order to identify stone quantities with the location as well as the storm event.
You guys have already know of this.
Oh.
I could give you a copy if you'd like.
Yeah, do you have a obvious...
No, that's okay.
I mean, that's fair.
And we use GZA minutes.
For different... Yeah, they've been with us covering this project since twenty nineteen. This is an estimated contract value for the construction oversight. I don't think it's going to go sixteen months, which is, if you do their math, that's where you get the... Three thirty-five ninety-five. This is also reimbursable through FEMA as well.
They jumped that. Questions?
Do you have any questions? Want me to do a motion?
Yeah, right.
Luke's Award Amendment Ten of Contract Nineteen dash FS dash I three to GCA Construction Based Services of FEMA repairs in the Glade and North Situate area in the amount of three hundred forty-five thousand nine hundred eighty-two dollars.
Second.
Harrison seconded by Mr. Gilmore, all in favor? Aye, two yeses. Right. You air source heat pump, thank you.
So what it's on for the air conditioning would be down, right? So the sewer drinking plant has been having an issue with the air conditioning. So they've been working with this contract for a lot of plants to get stuff, and Will was going to be here, but he's actually on vacation around, so he ended up. My big question with the Cardinal Committee is I didn't see any comment with it. Will had said.
Yes, it's under cap for twenty-five day, it's under twenty-five.
So. The... Oh, thank you. So the big thing with this is goals outside, because it's going to save eighteen point four hundred zero two. Yeah, well, we did the tour, and the... Yes, I love it.
The existing freon that's being used now is no longer in Surfside. Okay, freon, so they have to update the entire, the entire system that the heating plant. So one of the e-pumps, or a business, or energy, probably employees, we go forward with it.
You've not done a tour yet.
I have been there years, for a while, but not much.
For like this.
I couldn't get a motion?
Yes, much needed.
Move to award the contract twenty-five dash SS dash thirty-nine to Energy Conservation Incorporated for air source heat pump installation for the base for office building and lab building for an amount not to exceed one hundred sixty-five thousand and seventy... For an amount not to exceed one hundred sixty-five thousand and seventy dollars, which he says.
Surfside is. Label, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you. Which is really needed there. Autumn, like in November.
Yeah, it was.
It was nice.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Pizza, fancy, don't worry. It's been nuts. It's a good one.
It is. The Bates House is moving along. So the Bates one and two of Design Contract with Spencer Preservation Group has been concluded. They can withhold their recommendations. This would be a contract for them to be the final design. Here at Plan B, that's permitted, put it out to bid, and then in fact, construction illustration. Their contract is fifty-nine thousand, and Spencer Time Meeting appropriated sixty-nine thousand for this work, so we're under budget. And annual time meeting appropriated four hundred eighty thousand dollars for the work. And Spencer believes that that will be more than enough to do the big need to do to keep the Bates House. Waited. And then we have one question for you about the Bates House. And your thoughts on its restoration. One of the, one of the main causes of the problems at the Bates House structurally was the addition of the former. In the nineteen eighties. It wasn't put up appropriately, so. Even though it looks pretty, it's caused the catheters. So that's what's caused the roof to sag. That's what's caused the floors to set out, the second floor, and that's what's causing even all the way down to the basin. So the recommendation is Spencer Preservation Group, and when we discussed this, considering Historical Society and itself. Was that. The former is not historically accurate to the building. It was made of issue in the last couple of years. It is the source of all the problems that are structurally one of the building, so their recommendation is to remove the former. It's not. It's on the form. It's on the back.
Oh, I'm like, what kind of a house is that?
Yeah, well, that's why you don't see.
Is it a fall dormer to make it more?
It's just to have so you can see out to the water. So it was something to make it pleasant for someone to look out at the water for a second.
Did it have a bedroom up there?
There was a bedroom up there, but Sean, let the architect, the record for this. He had a good point. He's like, we're not, towns are not using this as a guest house. This is a residence that it constantly seems like it's kinda in. So there's no reason to keep that. He also was concerned that it may, it can definitely be more costly to try to take it down and rebuild it. Because the neighborhood's been done.
So is the price to remove the dormer included?
I think that would be part of, it would be within the four hundred thousand dollars of being a thousand dollars.
Thoughts on this?
I would, I would like to listen to what people let on about historical houses, if you really want to be a store, but not have a lengthy eighties add-on to it. Especially if that's.
Structure, yeah, correct.
Yeah.
Putting in a, a new. Even support team with that reverse.
Now, the structural damage is certainly there, that's what started all of this. What happened is that they, it's not centered appropriately. I think it was more for where they wanted the view, not for where she works structurally. And that was, that made the wall start to roll.
I also will predict that Monica Lightning will get a similar renovation. Because there's add-on pieces to that house that weren't original. That caused the damage so up.
It's similar to, and a question that came up in the lighthouse. To what era did we want to restore the lighthouse? And the decision was made at the time of the nineteen thirties. Because that's what people recognize as a lighthouse, not the eighteen seventy-two version of a lighthouse, or the eighteen eleven version of a lighthouse. People, yeah. So at, at a certain point, you don't see the dormer, it's on the back of the house.
It is, not even.
I didn't know. I would say, this Spencer really good.
They are, and it affects the entirety of the job. I would listen to the experts. Do we need to make a motion on that?
Move, move to award a contract of about fifty-nine thousand dollars to Spencer Preservation Group. For phase three dash five of Architective Services for Bates House Recreation.
Mr. Gilmore, second by. Harrison, all in favor? Aye. It's unanimous.
It's fun that the architect knows that the board was also the favorite, that's the reason. Thank you so much.
We trust them. Yeah, they're really good.
They do, they're very good. And a lot of people.
Oh, yeah. Oh, no, no one's. Alright. Next, okay. Your transfers were, my demo. Thank you. Oh, who am I next?
Who's this?
This is Nick. This is, so we don't become. Like the movie Filthless, start regulating different types of music.
This is consistent with where we were in our last.
Yes, because now we're formalizing on the verb, but if people don't know this at home, we actually had our regulations, like some places could play jazz music. Other places couldn't play jazz. We're not like Filthless. We just want to play music. I don't want to tell people we have a big thing, you know? Rock and roll is banned in such and such no more. We took all the music, the fact that we actually had regulations saying.
And number of pegs against it.
Quartet only with brass, woodwind, wood, woodwind strings only. This is all like stuff from ages ago that we're cleaning up. So the goal that's just in public, music, live music. We're not gonna sit up here and say. Does that make sense? We.
I agree too.
That's all we're doing, we're just cleaning it up, because it's crazy.
Move to standardize the annual entertainment license for all current and future businesses. Seating use to the following forbidden requirements. Indoor slash outdoor live amplified music. Indoor slash outdoor Sunday at eleven AM to ten PM. Indoor outdoor Monday through Thursday, ten AM to ten PM. Indoors only Friday to Saturday, eleven AM to twelve AM. Outdoors Friday to Saturday, eleven AM to ten PM. All doors and windows must be closed at ten PM every night. Effective immediately. All current license.
Well, not to communicate it.
Effective upon, upon delivery of notice. To all current licensed holders, to be notified of the entertainment license standing for the occasion Friday evening on U N O C service.
Moved by Mr. Gilmore, set very well. Second by Ms. Harrison. All in favor?
Aye.
All music is now welcome in city. Alright, next we have Northern River, Grand North River Commission, excuse me.
The chair. Yes, I'd like to see about handling this. We had a lot of correspondence. People saying they wanna work with Patrick. They don't totally agree with what he's written. I looked at the, the last two years of notes from the association. They only had three requests for action, two years. Nico's not even here with us, so I'd like to table this and. Now the time we can talk to Patrick, if he can get a full understanding before any decisions are made. Leave it the way it is.
Isn't there a two week window for written correspondence regarding the hearing tomorrow Tuesday?
Well, we have, I have correspondence to the town. And some are. They're, they're respectful of the fact that it's our state representative. I think he was listening to some of his community members and he reacted, but I don't think it's fully vetted. I think there's a lot of loose ends that could be worked on. Or we can make enough investigation to decide whether we don't accept it, but I think it's just a world. And without Nico here, something this important, dealing with our state representative, I think we should just especially steam it. And let, let work itself along with the problem views.
Well, so, two things. One. Maybe we will, people did come here, talk about it, at least.
Well, we were here.
Yeah, I just didn't wanna like send, so let's, let's see what people have to say. We have things to say. Kind of part of this. I think we're gonna realize there's a lot of miscommunication, and I, I'm gonna make sure that we.
Nobody here from. We want to read Patrick's.
Well, we can't find those, we were struggling. Jim, and then, yeah, we'll go with.
My, my point's very brief. Members have requested to put it on House Bill four one one zero. Legislation filed by Representative Canny. We feel section sixty-two of the Acts of. Section sixty-two of three sixty-seven of the Acts nineteen seventy-eight can establish the North River Commission. Bill very succinctly would abolish the North River Commission. And the duties and responsibilities of the North River Commission would then be taken on by local conservation. That's the, the justice. So members have asked it on the agenda, so that's why it's on the agenda, but we'll discuss whether or not you wish to take a position for.
There was also a hearing on this on July first. July first, I. I listened in, I wanted to speak, but I was at the foot of my own foot, so I, I listened in and submitted. In opposition, so I will say as a Situate resident, I submitted. Opposition vote because. For many reasons, one, as a select board member, I value. Communities and towns that work together and collaborate on everything from. Our shared resource, like the North River, to boat extras, to maybe some day original sewer. Or, you know, I just think of what we do with common accounting for purchasing power. I just think we need to do more of this sort of thing and not less. I will also say from listening in to the testimony, there are other. Watersheds that wish they did this, like there was the South Coast and I believe Merrick Bowdy. That were struggling with not managing a watershed. And a watershed, but managing as a watershed. So I think that. Forty-six, eight years, six, seven years ago, I think our elected officials made a really good decision to create the North River Commission. Not to say nothing is perfect. I mean, I, I am a lead on to the Conservation Commission. Zoning Board, and now North River Commission, and people are unhappy sometimes with decisions. What we need to make sure is that there is a clear bill path for them. And I think this resides with the state. And I'm really frustrated that this puts it on the debt in a time with, we don't have unlimited resources. And I have talked with Pat here about this probably three times. I respectfully disagree with this. And I believe that it is not in the best interest of the town Situate to support this bill. So I supported it as an individual resident, and I was very clear that it was not a board position. The comments are due in, I think now two weeks, so we would miss the comment window as a board. If we waited until our other member, Nico, is back. I believe he's back this week, so he could submit a letter if he disagrees with us. Or disagrees, assuming whatever, if we disagree. I will also say that I am a lead on to the Conservation Commission, the Conservation Commission. From the town Situate sent a letter, they voted on it, they had it the night before the hearing. And they noted humanistically not to support this stuff. There was customized, probably about an hour and a half, maybe, maybe an hour, not one, individuals supported it. Marshall Conservation Commission was against it, I believe Pembroke Select Board was against it. North River Commission. Norwell Conservation Select Board. I mean, there were six, this is actually a really cool thing, six counts. That collaborate on managing, helping to manage this historic river. It is, you know, not a historic river. And I spent a lot of time on the water, less so this year, but I spent a lot of time on the water, and the North River is really special. And I think it is special because of this committee, but I also, this commission, sorry. And I also think it's special because legislators forty, forty whatever, six or seven years ago, had the thought to do this. So I am strongly, I mean, nothing's, if we need about this in two months, I'm gonna have the same. I just am very, like, I get that we can, there may be, may be some problems, and maybe there could be a quicker appeal process for. But I don't think the way to solve it is to disband a commission that's worked successfully for forty-six years. I think there is, that we could possibly, that could be more funding. I also, I will say one other thing, I sent my letter to both our representatives, and I received a response from Patrick O'Connor. And I actually included that in your packet. And he said, he is opposed to decommissioning of the North River Commission and does not support the bill. And he supports and he's trying to work with that guarantee on this, but he does not support it. He supports, he filed an amendment to cover the fifty thousand dollar annual expense. And he's working with DCR to build those funds back in the budget, so his solution is for additional. Funds to the DCR budget. So that's my little. In terms of this, I. We can also listen, I know folks that are from, there are the representatives from. The North River Committee, the Situate representatives from the North River Commission are actually in attendance. And there may be other folks that want to speak as well, I don't know everybody, I'm afraid they're. That's my.
I can read.
My take on this. We can also read, I, I also, when I spoke to Patrick, Patrick hearing this morning. I asked him if he would send his testimony.
It's here.
Oh, and he sent it, right, and he sent it, so we do have it, we can read it.
Agreed. So it's to the time Mr. Patrick Verone, this law court, thank you for the opportunity, this is from State Representative McCarry. Thank you for the opportunity to testify in support of legislation to eliminate the North River Commission. And transfer, transfer its enforcement authority to local conservation agents from town councils of our river communities. Clear this bill is not about getting rid of scenic protected water or the environment of regulations. I do not bring this bill forward lightly. I was raised in the waters of the North River. So licensed charter boat captain, I finished fishing these waters, I've advocated for them for dredging grants to keep our waterways. That available and safe, the restoration of our clam flats. This is for local shell fishermen and preserve our ecosystem. Spent my life love on the river and fighting for it, is precisely because I care so deeply about the environment's future. But with the art structure of the North River Commission is no longer serving the public's interests. The NRC lacks basic administrative capacity. It has no full-time staff. And operates without the professional support and legal expertise needed to carry out its important mission effectively. Meanwhile, our town conservation agents and conservation missions do have professional staff, full-time and access to municipal legal counsel. These local officials are trained in environmental regulations. And they are better equipped to apply the law consistently and fairly. They're also more accessible and accountable to the public. The issue here is not about weakening environmental protections, it's about enforcing them the right way with transparency and professionalism. the right way with transparency and professionalism and rebuild integrity. For example, the landowner or resident wishes to appeal a decision made by the North River Commission, the appeal goes to the commissioner of the DCR. The very same official oversees the DCR attorney appointed to the North River Commission. This gives the commission the legal weight of a state agency, while ordinary residents must hire their own attorneys to fight decisions that are made in appeal within the same small body. It is unfair and it is unbalanced, it undermines public trust in the process. This is not fair or impartial process. It is, in my opinion, a violation of due process and something that should have no place in American governance. It is simply un-American to allow a body to act as judge, jury, and base its own case. This bill does not eliminate oversight or reduce protection from the North River. It ensures that those responsibilities are handled by local conservation agents and commissions who have the knowledge, staff, and legal backing to do the job right. It puts decision-making back into the hands of professionals who work every day in environmental enforcement and who are accountable to their communities. The North River is one of the Commonwealth's greatest national treasures. We must protect it. That's what this bill aims to do. I respectfully urge the committee to report this legislation favorably. Thank you, sincerely, Representative Patrick here, fourth district, both counties. So those, that is, for those comments.
Yeah, I think that it's horrible that we as a board did not react to this prior to the hearing at the State House. I think we should have, we need to do better about paying attention to what's going on around us in a bigger way. Unfortunately, I personally did know about this earlier on in the year and contacted Pat O'Connor and Sam Woods, who are both opposed to this. I personally loved that river, I lived on that river, you know, not on it, on it, so I don't have that kind of money, but near it for thirty years. I spent three summers with this North South River Watershed Commission testing that water. I love that river, and I really think that, I mean, I personally testified in opposition of this bill, I would much prefer to see the North River Commission strengthened if they need stronger representation, stronger controls, then our representatives should be fighting for that.
Jim?
We were, my, my thoughts are right at the beginning. I don't think we have enough capacity to wield the answers forward today. That's my opinion. I see things in here that are, that need to be looked into. The fact that there's no full-time staff, the fact that there's no full-time legal, professional legal, so I see the value of the people that have worked in the town. So I also understand that this is an old organization that's been around for a long time, has a good reputation. I, I, I wish like everybody to consider some type of a compromise here, including the state representative, but this is not, I, I don't want to hold yes or no. I just can't see it that way.
Yeah, again, I'm trying to have.
Sorry, Patrick O'Connor's letter back to Susan was very appropriate because he said, I want to work with Patrick on this. So I think this was a, again, a reaction from, from this, and I'm not putting words in his mouth, and I would never presume to do so, but he's listening to people in his community, and he's reacting at State House level. I, I, I think more diligence needs to be brought, brought to bear here. And everybody ends up winning and putting, putting the spotlight on it and putting the attention on it. Do they need full-time staff? From what I saw, three issues in the last two years doesn't really tell me they need full-time staff, but yeah, that should be brought up in an appropriate meeting, not on this agenda. That's where I'm at, is my opinion.
So I want to open it up, someone here for more folks. I'll say the one aspect that, to me, I think warrants us not only talking about this, and also at least thinking about some sort of a response, is whether or not this would be some sort of an unfunded mandate at the town. If it is, if it isn't, let's talk about that. If it is, I think I have a financial duty to say, hey, if we're looking at a possible override next year, is this going to burden our staff? That doesn't necessarily mean that some of those reforms, like the ones you listed, about a legal staff that we can't talk about and say, hey, we need to investigate that here, that's a great idea. But that conversation hasn't happened, and that's what I'm trying to have now, is that conversation of what, what could some of the reforms be? Let's, I'd love to hear from the commission, folks in the commission, get a little bit around. So I think at the end of the day, I think in Representative's letter, he's absolutely right that we all care, we love that river, we want to see it be preserved, and what is the best way? And the only thing I've learned is that every problem is like, it's miscommunication, right? Miscommunicate with some, someone, if you don't talk to someone, it fester's. So the only way for us to kind of get through some of this is to kind of talk about it. I think, I think we can kind of get better. Is that, is that message, see, I'm, I'm trying to kind of learn more about where, where we're going with people, what your, what your, I appreciate his testimony here, but unless you're going to consider every aspect of every paragraph in his testimony. For example, the, the conflict of interest in the setup right now, I'd rather he be present than in a meeting where we all sit down and figure this out. He was well aware and invited to his test. So I can't force folks to show up or not show up.
We can't decide not to take action on it tonight. We can't have a table.
This has only been due within two weeks.
So we can always have, we can always have a special meeting if we want to require a special meeting. We've got plenty of time.
When is the ECO returned from Africa?
I think it's. Wait, listen, we, we still haven't decided if we're going to vote on this. I still just want to talk about it. One of these people that's sitting here, we would have. Yeah, yeah, no, I'm just, who knows, maybe a little bit more, a little bit, we don't know, nothing's set in stone. One of this sentence though, is I think we guys have given a lot of this. Perfect.
I mean, it's kind of law, speak first as a citizen of the town, and second as an alternate of the North River Commission. As a citizen, I don't.
Hey, you want to come up or you want to talk to you or, and just if you're interested, just for the record, forget that.
I'm John Malone.
And your address.
Okay.
Your address.
Seventy-two Moreland Road. Okay, thank you. As a citizen, someone who loves the river like we all do, I think it's kind of harsh to take the state office position and just disband the council. He raises some grievances, some which are, in my opinion, as a citizen, some exaggerated, and, and can be rebuttal. I think it's unnecessary to disband, what if there's some reform, if there's some additional governance by funding, if there's some concern about the scope and scale of the, of a committee, well then let's lay it out there and fix it through more funding and strengthen the commission and, so say that as a citizen, as a member of the committee. I've only been on here for two years. I served with folks that have been on here for many, many years, and I found it in the meeting, and I read the regs, reread the regs, and took what I tried to absorb and put it in the context of individual cases, and I still don't have a full grasp, and that's why I went alternate. It takes time to ramp up and get very crisp on the application of the protective water. And to put that on top of a prime problem that's already got their base of knowledge and their book of business, if you will, and expect them to be able to quickly, accurately, and consistently apply that across the six towns, it's a pretty big ask. It is something that I think any of our, the struggle, both intellectually and statistically, and you look at some of those meetings that go to ten o'clock at night, and now we're attacking the wrong one. So it just doesn't seem to make sense. But I don't think you all need to not, I think taking a position on whether it should be disbanded or not is a reasonable one to take tonight. And then talk about fixing.
My take was, as chair, we would not be disbanding. That's my quote. I think we should keep it the way it is until it gets a better way to be.
Well, again, once we hear from everyone, what's maybe the best course of action is?
Thank you.
I'm going to ask.
Good evening. My name is Bill Schmidt, S E H M I D, I live at thirty-three Egypt Beach Road in Citrus. It's important that I say that I'm here as a private citizen, I'm working for the federal government, and that will have no bearing on my testimony here tonight. What does have a distinct bearing on my testimony is I served as the vice chair of the Citrus Conservation Commission for many, many years. I served as the vice chair of the waterways for many, many years. I'm currently on the traffic rules and regulations here in the city. And I want to start with saying that in terms of, I, I see it as your obligation to say something tonight, not that it should be, I see if you are representing the citizens of this town, then it would be your obligation to say so within the prescribed ECO, not for anyone. So there's a couple of points that I want to make. One is, this bill is a repeal of the North River Commission, and it is in committee right now. I spoke to the head of the Detroit Division of Environmental and Natural Resources, where the bill is set. The conservation members in this town are volunteers. They're volunteers, just like you are, with some very little experience. If you go across the hall to that room, they have files stacked to the ceiling of files. I just spoke with them, and they have appeals dating back months that they're still working. They, it, there's to be little argument that they are overtaxed and under-resourced. Losing this resource on the North River Commission as an additional check and balance comes into play on several different levels. First of all, we know for a fact that regulations and rules at the federal and likely the state level are going to be challenged consistently under this new administration. And the fact that we would lose this august body on the North River Commission as an additional resource to help govern and help the consistency of the North River, there's seven towns involved, each one has a conservation. How do we ensure consistency for the North River across seven? This is one of the reasons. So we're going to see a reduction in state and federal across the board, right? And so the resources at the federal and state level are going to be in jeopardy, and therefore there's a trip down effect to the local citizens. The idea that the North River Commission doesn't have a full-time staff and therefore should be disbanded is counterintuitive. If we say that the North River is a valued resource, we should focus our attention on strengthening the North River Commission and never give a iota of consideration to its elimination. Happy to answer your questions.
Thank you, thank you. You, you say that this is six or seven towns, and I understand that completely, it's six or seven towns with the, with Conservation Commission knowledge, with full-time staffs. Then you say, okay, if the North River Association doesn't have all that, whoa, hold on, you also say we're going to have a major cut in funding, which is possibly looming, I understand that federally, at least. But when you say that, then we say, okay, so that we should be paying for, we should be now creating a new budget line item for the North and South River so that they have those resources that our towns already have? Is that not ambiguous?
Actually, I don't think that you interpreted my statement very well. What I said was that they are under-resourced, the towns are grossly under-resourced, and mostly staffed to volunteers. So to have that, their volunteer efforts augmented by this dedicated group of people, of course, only makes sense.
Well, I looked at the two, last two years of House, there are only three incidents.
So why would that, you argue that, that they are an impediment?
I'm not arguing, I'm, I'm arguing why should we create another budget to?
No one said about another budget. I said, I said if they need a distal resource, we should give it.
Yes, kind sir. Somebody needs to make the conflict of interest.
Where is the conflict of interest? No, just because he threw that into a sentence doesn't mean that one actually thinks.
It's a very clearly written conflict of interest.
No, it's not.
Oh, okay, I'm going to correct this, please. No more questions.
Any notes?
One thing I mentioned. Hi, Tracy Kelly, sixty-one, Pike Road. I have two different complaints in the North River Commission. I am someone who has had issues with some of the things the North River Commission has made me do in terms of building, et cetera, et cetera. However, I thoroughly, hundred, hundred percent, advocate the North River Commission. I quite frankly wonder what Representative Canning's motivation for filing this bill was, quite frankly. I don't know, it's not for me to try and guess. But when you have coordinated effort, seven or eight towns that are part of the North River Commission, they're all looking at everything that's going on. Someone else had alluded to the insistency of it, it's important, there's history there, not everyone's going to be happy with everything all the time, but it is such a valuable resource where we live on the river, we canoe on the river, we swim in the river, you jump off the bridge, and you're going to straight into the river, you're walking on it, you have yoga on it. It is too valuable a resource to ignore and to step back from the responsibility to care for. So I respect your opinion, Jamie. However, I believe the town should make a statement prior to the deadline for getting such statement. So, of course, I'm happy to use. Okay? Good, thank you. I give it.
Adrian Gallagher, eighty-four, Collier Road. I'm the member, the chief of the job. So I'm, I'm just being on behalf of the commission. I, I am also in the quarter, my own third quarter. Everybody in the quarter, there is a lien on the property. So anybody that moves into town or buys fixed property that's in the quarter knows about it. The commission does a very good job sending a welcoming packet, so, so none of, none of these regulations really should surprise anyone. We do, there's, you know, seven hundred homes, you figure that, you know, people have special permits to do additions or renovations, et cetera, et cetera, so. The, the wealth of knowledge, the representative firm, now, at least, of most of these. And so we do have some really long-term folks on the commission, the tribal. And so we do have some really long-term folks on the commission to try and apply the regulations that were written in seventy-eight to protect not only the semen I work, the environmental, and we have none. So I would strongly urge you to discuss it tonight and make a statement tonight, hold on tonight. Because it's for you, so out the open about, well, that, you know, it's a kind of a span here, and we'd like City to, you know, come on strong, represent. That's not to say we don't want to work with, with the company. This bill, excuse me, came as a surprise to us. He never came to the mission and said, hey, I'm thinking about doing this. So, you know, we were caught a little footed here. We were a little behind on the eight ball, but we would like, I must admit, to come together, stand together, and oppose this. Have you entertained questions?
Yeah, so our selectmen here, we are not, I think we need to reform, but we need to do better. And we're going to keep working on it. We're trying to do things better, make sure more people are heard. Do you think your commission, who you serve on, you think it should be done better or differently, that they get through to improve?
Oh, absolutely. We don't always get it right. But we're always willing to stay with it, right? We're always willing to work with people to, you know, try to get them what they want within what the commission is saying.
I'm, I'm trying to get this whole story straight. To be honest, I'm, it makes me most flustered about this all is that we're put in this situation in the first place. So you, you haven't sat down, so no one has had that meeting of with Brett Piri and the commission and ECR or whoever. So there hasn't been this big meeting. I'm just trying to figure what has actually happened?
The bill's already missed.
Right, no, I know. But so no one has said, hey, let's all get together in a room, let's have a conference call, let's talk about this?
You just can't afford it with the bill.
Okay. Just, so here's what, Jamie, this is, here's honestly where I think we need to do. I think we need to start, all of us need to start talking. Like, we need to reach out. If we do or don't, write a letter, because I think if we support or don't support this, essentially it's a letter to Giri and to the mayor to say, hey, can we all get together in a room? Do we think that this is a good? As a board, I think that would be a good idea for the commission and someone from the selectmen. To say, hey, what, what are some things that we can do to get better?
This bill as written was literally one sentence to dismantle the North River Commission. That's what is filed, that's what was spoken on at the hearing on July first. And we are discussing our reaction in a fourteen-day window to this hearing. But I, I could agree. I'm an ann. I do not support this bill. And I think we need to get over it. I'm not, let's wait, I, I, or let's not make a statement. I, I'm an ann. I can definitely not support this bill and think this is not the right path. Because I could say, oh, there needs to be a better and quicker appeal path. We don't agree on that, but, but I, we could agree on a problem and not agree on a solution. Do you know what I'm saying? So like, I do not in any scenario agree on the solution. And I think there needs to be better. Let's all get together.
Yep. I'm absolutely not saying we're not to the man. I mean, I think there's been right. There's always, there's a diagnosis of a problem, and then there's a prescription. And whether or not this legislation is the right prescription or not is kind of what we're talking about. There's, there's a diagnosis. We talk about if some things are sick and some things are, you know, but that's for the discussions. I think we should just have that. And whether or not this, as a, as a board, we want to say that we support it or not support on legislation. I'll, I'll say personally, the two things that stick out, there's a couple of things. We're, we're in this predicament because someone else filed the bill. We're under the, the deadline because there's another committee that has the deadlines. This is nothing that we asked for. And as a financial, my financial concern is that there's a state bill that could add or give new responsibilities to our full-time staff. That's an issue. Well, I think we have responsibility to talk to, to say, hey, do you want the state telling our full-time staff what to do? We didn't have to be in this spot, but we are. We're looking at a possible override. Now, full-time staff being all possible unfunded mandates. And that's even without getting to the merits of issue drives or even if there's a commission, with the commission. And again, I, I, I think because we have this, this two-week window to get back, I think we have to, have to say something about what our principle is, unfunded mandate or not unfunded mandate, and whether or not this is the right way to go forward, and what is the best way to process it. Does that make sense? Am I, am I speaking out of a term or is that?
Yeah. If I mean, whether or not we prove that the post build up the commission disbanded doesn't change the need by that order. They can talk things out that leave that, that is more, that's a competition for that. Principal level, practical level. Do you, 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 and you think the North River Commission should be off? If you do, then, then say so. If you don't, then it would be seen as a board who brings it for a load, this is clear enough.
Well, I don't think I have enough information to be able to make that determination. I don't live on the river. I do see it, I was, I'm done with, that was humorous, throwing a little lemon. But I, but I see one, one, one paragraph in here which talks strictly deals with the due process situation that exists. But I don't even know enough about that because it's only in one paragraph in representative's back to us.
I, I agree.
So that's, that's a serious issue.
It is. And that's the representative word here, but he's not. If he had written us a letter earlier, but he did not. He had reached out to the commission, but he did not. He reached out to anyone on, on our conservation committee, but he did not. Our cons, I have two independent boards in town who voted. But the conservation committee, and then members that we appoint to the commission, the front of me saying, this is an issue. We have two independent boards saying this is a problem. We have other towns saying it's a problem. We have our state senator who says that it's a problem. I, I don't have, there's, trust me, there's a million bills on Beacon Hill I don't like. But the fact that this one is, is forced upon our, to give additional work to our town employees makes it an issue. In five years, I've never had to do a letter like this. Or even talk about something because we've never had anyone say, hey, let's give some work to your town employee without talking to them first. I did not, this, this is one of the last things I wanted to be talking about. There's a million other bills on Beacon Hill that can help and not help this town. And I've talked to the representative, and I wanted to get this meeting, people talking, and can't believe, you can't get people in a room to talk. I gotta go, I'm gonna, so, uh, we'll come back to it. Becky, you got your hand up.
Ms. Malamet, you should be able to unmute, just name, address, and go ahead with your statement. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Becky Malamet, one hundred, Pratt Road. I also work for the North and South Rivers Watershed Association. I just wanted to add a couple of points. One is to clarify that there are six towns that are impacted by the, or are, that are members of the North River Commission. And the funding that comes from the state, currently half of the funding pays for the administration and for the part-time employee. The other half pays for enforcement and monitoring over the course of the summer, or of the season, I guess I should say. So we've talked a lot about the impact on conservation commissions and legal counsel, but if the North River Commission is disbanded and this, the acts of nineteen seventy are repealed, then you not only need to figure out how to manage the permitting piece, but also the enforcement. Every year kind of shuffles whether it's been Marshfield, the last couple of years, it's been Pembroke. Harbor Master has patrolled the river to enforce the no-wake zone and not, people not being on jet skis and water skis and that sort of thing. So I just want to kind of include that there's an additional burden that we haven't discussed quite as much. And I do think it's important for the committee to hear the perspectives of the towns who will be most directly impacted. I think they're hearing a lot from advocates and about the importance of the river and of the Scenic Protective Act and the fact that this is the one and only scenic protective river in the state. I do think it's important, like I said, for the, for the committee to hear that the state, that i- if the towns are not ready for this, that this isn't the time for it. I think that's a really important point to be made.
Thank you. I want to question one's statement, sir. First, I did talk to Frank Snow, who was our conservation commissioner before I came here today, to let him know that I intended to come here and that if he thought it was all right. And as you're likely aware, that the conservation commission, the Citew Conservation Commission does not think that this is a good idea. So I, I mean, if you have to go right to the proverbial horse's mouth on this, the Citew Conservation Commission that we have elected to represent us in these matters, does not think it's a good idea. Secondly, sir, if the vote, the board were to vote, it does not have to be a unanimous vote.
So, so Jamie, my, I guess my position is really this. I think Becky hit the nail on the head. For me, it's whether or not the town is ready or not. All the things that he lays out, and I'm just saying this hypothetically, let's say the commission is awful, terrible, and it's not good. It doesn't matter for me because the town's not ready. We don't have the money or the resources to help manage this, whether or not it's, effectively not, and there's no recall to do that. So like, regardless of the merits of the commission, which by the way, I think, I do think is very good. I'm just using it as, like, that's, to me, a separate issue of whether or not the town can afford to take on additional responsibility unless someone else can tell me that we're itching to add more. Jim, are we trying to add more responsibilities to our full-time staff than we've just had left? We have four from last year?
One and a half?
We have two. But we also have forty notice of, and ten since, for example, here.
This committee's only added three in two years.
For Citew, but also for North River.
No, three appeals.
Those were appeals.
I'm saying no to the tent. We have forty. Kingham, for example, has eighteen. Norwalk has fifteen. Pembroke has eight. We have way more than other towns. Our conservation agent, she's the one, our conservation agents is, that office has a lot of responsibility and also works with the conservation commission on the trails, Vegas, which we've also increased that responsibility. So we would have to hire additional easily to do. You're talking, the three is just the appeals. Right. You're only talking three appeals. That's not just three cases of Citew in two years. It's my understanding. But I agree. We are not ready to take on additional responsibility from the state without a good explanation and more funding from them.
Does it not make sense to have a proactive approach? Whatever town will do it to them.
I also think it, I know it doesn't eliminate the intent of the scenic history, but I think it dilutes it. I think it, like, one hundred percent dilutes it. And I want more opportunities to collaborate with neighbor and towns, whether it's the shared watershed, whether it's a shared sewer, whether it's a shared students at boat. I don't want less.
I have a popular feeling, like, it's very, it's good, yeah.
Anyway, I'm, I'm you know what? I just like, so I'm just a group of your state or I don't mind. I would like to make a motion that we vote on this matter. Outside of that.
Okay. What's, what's, what's the motion?
The motion was that we that we write a letter in opposition of House Bill four one one zero.
I'll take it. I, I want, we, I would like to know, this is where I'm trying to get at the other part of the agreement. I'll, I'll, I'll take the motion to do that. What are your, what are your thoughts on taking that motion, doing it, but adding in that we, it'll be good use of? This is, we should all meet, we should talk, we should address and talk about the concerns that, that he brings up. But we still, but we still oppose, we still send in, we oppose the legislation, but this warrants further discussion among all stakeholders.
I agree. I agree with that. I'm always open to communication on how to improve every single motion that we do.
And then we can talk about what his concerns are, and actually we can start with the wall for fixing, I think, and make sure that our town employees are involved. They're going to be the ones that will have to take over.
Yes, they should be.
Absolutely. We're concerned about costs. We should understand what those cost charges are instead of speculation. We should understand if the feds are going to cut money. I, I thought the governor's budget the other day was pretty nice. But I don't have a crystal ball for next year. I think we all know where, what a crystal ball might look like next year, but I think the conversation has to be furthered. Go on. That's how we started, huh?
All right. So we have a motion. And I think you oppose the July last draft.
Right.
Last draft. And then put in the rest of the letter that we acknowledge that the conversation has to take place, that there are issues arising from the way the commission operates. We're willing, able, ready to sit down with the state and all the staff.
I like that.
You like that? All right. All right. Moved out of Mr. Schlegel, second by Mr. Harrison. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And it's unanimous. Love it. And we're all good, and we're gonna, it's a great commission. We're gonna make it even better. We're gonna work with our state brought up to a great job. Bankham, and we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna make this, keep it out of the public.
Sounds great, Wes.
Awesome.
I'll get us one.
Thank you. All right. Given all of those, liaison Ed Torres, on men. Liaison, I didn't have some good liaison.
Hi, I'm liaison stuff. Very excited to start liaising. I have a quick update from the Water Resource Commission. I haven't met with them yet, but there's a little stamp who would be zoning by lot as written. It names the tax act group on reservoir. It's the only named water body within the buffer zone, and they would like the old open bracket ponds, as well as whatever the other, like, problems. The pond is to be included in municipal wording. And they were wondering where to start with now. So I don't know if that's a planning board thing, a zoning board thing.
Zoning by lot?
It's a zoning by lot.
Plan.
Planning board, okay. So I'm going to meet with the planning board on Thursday as their new liaison. The historical commission met a couple of weeks ago, and they have been working on funded through a CPC grant, this preservation plan. They've been working on it for about a year. Right now, it's a seventy-six-page document detailing a plan to work forward with the town preserver, you know, trying to get certain historical areas preserved, et cetera. So they will be able to present probably a condensed version of that to us for this.
That's awesome. Thank you.
And I haven't met my other boards, so I will continue to read.
This is like a weird, like, it's a weird time.
Everyone's on vacation this summer.
Well, either Waterways is meeting tonight. Um, um, the discussing their finances, so there's something we'll do then, but I can't wait to hear.
the discussing their finances, so there was some people who would get, but I can't wait to hear. And that is going to get so crap for the rates, they're looking through possible options for rate increases.
Oh, I've talked to numerous people around town about this, numerous.
And they are, and they are going to propose something to us because, um, we changed in our financial policy to change that each of the enterprise companies, like, present each year, come to the board whether, whether they think they need rate increases or not. So they are tracking for this fall, which is the timing in which we're gonna get into it. And then they're also discussing the harbor, the, the Harbor Master, obviously, harbor.
Okay.
And they have to be on Tuesday, it is not Wednesday, so that's why I missed the meetings this summer. And then I watch, I go watch it very closely. That's all I have.
Misgender disabilities are meeting tomorrow, but one of these on the agenda, really cool. Is that, it's, it's middle school, right, the middle school project that you did? Yes, it is, those kids are still working, my book. This is for BJACs, for folks, ability issues. You're knocking it out of the park. It's awesome. So they're gonna present all new places, we're gonna get greater access, and this did a great job, all of it. That's all I want. Correspondence or?
I just wanted, that, say, was it up there, because there's a lot of fun, just the K thirty, I've been...
Oh, yeah, yeah, I, I did the K thirty in, I've been, um, with fifty of, um, Independence Day the other day, I believe it was July fifth. They did a fantastic job, um, at Pier forty-four. Great.
Super fun. I think people were just smelling the blue wine, buying a cup.
It looks, I, it looks so good, I'm sorry, it looks so good.
Mr. Chair, I did, we did present the proclamation. Oh, yeah, to Brenda O'Connor, that guy, it was a lovely evening. Uh, Irish Council was there, she presented a nice presentation. Patrick O'Connor was there, he presented the citation to Senate. And Representative Perry sent this citation to the State House. It was a surprise, so we didn't blow it that night. Okay, I'm good.
She wasn't watching, she was, she was at a clock a night?
She was thrilled with that, that she doesn't like surprises for the community.
Oh, nice. I forgot one, because I did a pride proclamation at the breakfast, and they, oh, they loved it, so. The proclamations were a good thing.
Yes, love proclamations.
You do have some worth ones. Okay, good ones to help, kind of like, standing in the...
Some work to the issue we just had, so we, we respect you because we passed on that.
Yeah, I don't think we need to do that.
But this is a nice one, this is, uh, let's see. This is from Richard Flynn to Jennifer Bogan. Approved special event for it. Thanks very much for your help with the NSBIIA of that, I understand it's important to the high, we had a great day and great turnout. I wanted to compliment the police, fire, and public works departments, they all look fabulous, job to make our event fun and safe. It makes me feel proud to be a constituent resident, and I see all of these folks in action. Thanks again, Richard Flynn. Thanks. That was the Jennifer of the town. Uh, this is correspondence regarding uh, the tables at the Galley Restaurant, there are, are sufficient, et cetera, at a deal. All similar topic to what I've been, I've already proven since. I think their concern about the expanded parking, because it, it really isn't, there's twenty, twenty seats there, which was what's in the plan, but there were some of the security, bigger load signs that might have been poaching into the other spot, which are now, I understand, being moved, taken. But there's two letters regarding that. And that's really all I have. There's another letter about the North and South River. Yeah, and not in favor of us.
Thank you. Do we have a motion for approval of meeting minutes? For?
June twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth.
For June twenty-fourth and? We'll go to base.
Twenty-fifth.
Oh, June twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth.
I will accept the slip for minutes for June twenty-fourth to twenty-fifth.
Legal, signed by, and the search for all paper, by unanimous. Motion to adjourn.
No move.
No move, move, all in favor.